Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023 Escondido Planning Commission. If you could all rise for the flag salute, please.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have the roll call, please.
Chair Paul.
Yes, present.
Vice Chair Barbe.
Present.
Commissioner Barber.
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Here.
Commissioner Macaro. Commissioner Spear.
Here.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
The first item tonight is approval of the minutes from our September 26th, 2023 meeting. Are there any questions or motion?
If I may interject, I would appreciate—my name's not on there, just saying—for the present—I was actually present last time. So we could—so I would make a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
Second.
Voting has been opened with the corrections required. If you could refresh your screens and submit that.
I know, it's been a few weeks.
Waiting on Commissioner Fitzgerald to submit and—Commissioner Barber? Barbe?
Again?
Uh, Barbe, sorry.
Oh, I did. I thought I did.
Submit vote.
The other barber?
Barbe.
Apologies, I thought I had submitted.
Commissioner Barbe?
There we go. The votes are six-zero to approve with corrections to the minutes.
All right. Next is written or oral communications for any item not on the agenda. Do we have anything, Alex?
None at this time.
Thank you. Coming to our public hearing, PL 22-0603/PL 22-0604/PL 23-0239555, North Tulip Street. Staff report.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Ivan Flores, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. Now I'll be presenting on this project, also known as the Gold Line Battery Storage Project. It is a request to amend the zoning map to rezone the subject property from Plan Development Industrial to General Industrial. A request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for an increase in fence height on a case-by-case basis through the administrative adjustment process, and a major plot plan to facilitate the construction of a lithium-ion battery storage utility capable of delivering up to 50 megawatts of energy storage. Project includes onsite and off-site improvements, not limited to demolition of a portion of the existing building, construction of screening walls, and landscaping. Proposal also includes adoption of an initial study mitigating negative declaration prepared for the project. The project is located in the general planned land use designation of General Industrial, which is meant to support a wide range of industrial uses. The project has a zoning of Plan Development Industrial, but as a part of the request tonight, the Planning Commission will be recommending to City Council amending the zoning designation to the General Industrial M2 zoning district. Property is surrounded primarily by industrial uses and the M1 and M2 zoning district. Project site is approximately 6.232 acres. The project site was previously developed under 92-43-PD/COZ, which was the Plan Development Industrial and was meant to facilitate the construction of the existing natural gas facility and the Isoplex, which has been vacant since July 2020. General area consists primarily of industrial uses and is adjacent to the flood control channel. The closest residential use is approximately 900 feet away. As stated earlier, the project includes an amendment to amend the underlying zoning designation from Plan Development Industrial to the M2 zoning district, which is consistent with the general planned land use designation of Light Industrial—General Industrial. The M2 zoning district is meant to allow the widest range of manufacturing and other heavy industrial uses that require the least restrictive design standards. Utilities are permitted by right, which the—which would include the project before the Planning Commission tonight. Additionally, the project includes a zone tax amendment to allow for an increase in fence height on a case-by-case basis, specifically for commercial zones, 25% increase in the fence height, and 50% increase in fence height for industrial zones. And this would be through the administrative adjustment process. This amendment would amend two sections of the zoning code, specifically under Article 61, which is Administration and Enforcement. The intention of this amendment is to streamline the process when this type of request is associated with discretionary action. Currently, an administrative adjustment permit is reviewed by staff, and a notice of intended decision is issued by the Director. Through this amendment process, the notice of intended decision would not be required as it would be reviewed as part of the main entitlement. And this is just some background for the Planning Commission. The notice of intended decision is published in a newspaper of general circulation, is mailed to owners within a 500-foot radius, and a decision is posted onsite. Decision is effective 10 days after all public notice requirements have been met, and it allows for interested parties to appeal the decision to the Planning Commission. This streamlined process would maintain the public notification process while also allowing applicants to have their requests reviewed concurrently with the development proposal. So in the future, if an applicant had a discretionary project that would come to the Planning Commission, they would also be able to apply for the administrative adjustment, which would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So before we go into detail on the actual site plan, staff found it appropriate to give an overview of what some of the equipment onsite would look like. So the proposed B-link that you are seeing is known—is—would be the battery container. The batteries themselves are stored within these containers on racks, or depending on the specific manufacturer that the applicant chooses to—to pick for—to provide the —the battery—the B-links. The E-link is meant to provide power up to three of these B-links, which is shown here. The PCS is the Power Converter System, which transmits power to the grid. And the WIS is known as the Water Injection System and is meant for fire suppression. So as you'll see on the overall site plan, this is the typical of what these—of how these units would be laid out. The PCS is the Power Converter System, which—which—I'm sorry—which transmits power to the grid—I already said that, sorry. They store up to 50 megawatts of storage—energy storage. Here on the site plan, you'll see the pink—the pink line denotes the property line, the red hash line denotes the proposed screen wall, and the hash—the actual solid marks, the solid blocks are the B-links themselves. As seen on the site plan, there's approximately 27 B-link—27 rows of B-links for a total of 87 B-link containers. They're arranged in rows of three, and each of them have the—have the WIS, the Water Injection System, the E-link, which provides power to them, and then the PCS. As a part of the proposal, they demolish a portion of the building and retain approximately 7,268 square feet, which they will use as office space. Towards the rear, the gray area represents the natural gas facility, and they are not proposing any changes to this asset. The orange mark denotes the 20—existing 20-foot screen wall, which will remain. They will be providing 11 off-street parking spaces, and as discussed in the staff report, the Parking Commission may—the Planning Commission may—may require the amount of parking spaces based on the use. They anticipate having four employees onsite weekly, mainly for maintenance and operations, however, most of it will be handled remotely. Here on the landscaping plan, they are proposing additional landscaping in addition to the existing Mexican fan palms. They're proposing up to 104 trees. The screen wall will be—we'll have Boston ivy to serve as an effective screen of the actual wall itself. The wall would be approximately 10 feet away from the front property line, and so through the administrative adjustment process, if the zone tax amendment is approved, they would be able to construct the 12-foot screen wall outside of the setback. But effectively—they're screening it through landscaping. Here we see the elevations that they are proposing. So right here on the north elevation, you'll see it from Tulip Street. The south elevation is towards the rear of the property. The east elevation is looking from the flood control channel, and the west elevation is looking west from the corner of Tulip Street. The project would be screened through 12-foot screening walls. The average height of a B-link is about nine and a half—to 10 feet in height, so they will not protrude above the proposed screen wall. And we'll provide additional details on kind of the perspective of where these elevations are taken from. So as stated earlier, this is the east elevation, looking from the flood control channel. Here you'll see the existing substation identified in the background. They're not proposing any additional transmission lines, and so they'll be utilizing the existing substation for the transfer of the energy that's stored. Here we are still looking from the flood control channel, but towards the south. Here we identify the termination of the 20-foot screen wall and where the then 12-foot screen wall will continue. And this is the west elevation, looking from the northern section of Tulip Street. So the 12-foot screen wall would run the full length of the property. Initial study mitigated nuclear decoration was prepared and circulated for 30 days from July 13th to August 14th. No public comments were received during this period. There were no changes necessary to the document, other than a cleanup of one of the suffixes— one of the suffixes used for the mitigation language. The MND identified potentially significant impacts in areas of biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, and tribal cultural resources. However, through the incorporation of the mitigation measures, impacts can be reduced to less than significant levels. Based on the analysis contained in the staff report and this presentation, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2023-19, recommending approval to the—approval of the project to City Council. That will conclude staff's presentation. The applicant is here along with the applicants—along with their consultants, such Onward, who is the applicant, Chambers Group, who prepared the initial study, Jensen and Hughes, who produced the site and product review, which was attached—one of the attachments to the staff report, and Capstone Fire, who is a private fire district that may provide any additional information that the Planning Commission may have. And we also have our fire marshal here, Levana. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Does the applicant want to make a presentation, Ivan?
Does anyone ready to make a presentation?
No, no, that's okay. No, that's okay. So I have one question about your staff report, and—and I needed just to get clarification. The zoning, the M2, did you say that it's—the utilities are allowed under the existing zoning or under the M2, or both? And I'm—I'm sorry, didn't ask you to repeat that.
No, it—it would be allowed under the proposed zoning, the M2 General Industrial.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have questions, staff?
Staff, who will they be supplying the energy to? Is it to the Clean Energy Alliance?
I'll let the applicant—I'll defer to the applicant for that question.
Okay. I think most of my questions are going to be directed to the applicant. What other—well, no.
Yeah, so come—please come to the podium, whoever can answer that question.
Yep. The—the plant is contracted to Clean California Community Power. It's a CCP that is a power procurement group that is buying the power for CCAs in California.
I'm familiar with CCP, thank you. Explain to me, give me a short one-on-one, and how does the energy production and distribution work?
Yeah, so the storage project will not produce electricity. What it will do, it'll store electricity that is produced elsewhere in the system, but it's not being used. So for an example, if there is a lot of solar production at any given time of the day, and the demand for that power is not enough to use all that electricity, instead of wasting it, it is going to be stored in products like this. When—just following the same example, when the sun sets and then there's no more solar production, instead of firing up, let's say, natural gas generation plant, you can use the electricity that's stored in the battery system. So that's one example of how these projects are used.
I know that—well, I'm going to save that question for later. How—how much experience does your company have with these projects, or is this your first rodeo?
So the company has 6,200 megawatts worth of power generation. This is going to be the second battery project that we have.
Second?
We are—we currently have one battery that is in construction in Maryland.
It's in construction, but it hasn't been in operation.
Correct.
Okay, so in trying to research this industry, I came across potential risks, and I'm going to describe a risk and then ask you to explain how your company is going to be trying to reduce that risk from happening.
Yep.
Okay. So thermal runaway, an uncontrolled release of energy, if it happens in a single cell, it can cause a chain reaction, which could result in a fire or explosion. How are you working to reduce that risk?
So I do have the—the technical team that can answer that question, if you—if you can let them come on—the stage.
Yes, please.
Jensen, you want to take that one?
Thank you for your answering my questions.
Hello, Jensen Goinsen, Jensen Hughes. So the question was for thermal runaway mitigation prevention, correct?
Yeah, you can reduce the risk of thermal runaway causing a fire explosion.
Yeah, so—so what we do, you know, we—for once, we look at the regulation, what safety regulation is in place. So we look at the California Fire Code, as well as like NFPA 855, which is the governing safety standard for energy storage system installations. And both rules call for thermal runaway protection, which you can achieve, like with a battery management system. So we have reviewed like a number of products that would be possible to use for this project here, and, you know, we would make sure that the product has the appropriate UL listings that—that fulfill this requirement of thermal runaway protection. If for some reason thermal runaway would still happen, there are other mitigation measures installed. One example is, we heard earlier in the presentation about like a water injection system, for example, which would cool such a reaction and prevent it from—from propagating. And then I think your—your second point was the explosion hazard associated with—with thermal runaways. So what happens during a thermal runaway, that's like an exothermic chemical reaction in which like gases are being produced, these are flammable gases, so that's why like an explosion risk can occur. So in—in that situation, the battery enclosures, or like the containers, like we saw in the—in the layout, there will be—they will have explosion prevention or—or explosion venting measures in place. That is also required by the—by the California Fire Code, for example, and NFPA 55.
Okay, so that actually answered a question I was about to ask myself. The cases that—the—they're enclosures, as you refer to them. They're housing these protective casing to help protect the systems from any damage, but I've also learned through my attempt at research that the systems can also—because they're so designed so tightly to protect—the—to protect the system, the casings, that they can also potentially block water from accessing the seat of the fire. So, I mean, are you familiar with this risk? And if so, how—how can we feel a level of comfort that that won't be an issue in the future?
Okay, yeah, so there are different form factors of batteries that can be used. You know, there is like the cylindrical cell, which is pretty much like a double-A battery that—that everybody knows. There are prismatic batteries, they look kind of like a motorcycle battery, so to speak, you know, like a—or a pouch cells, which are like—like in a foil casing. So depending on what kind of form factor batteries are being used, it is—it's—it's either quite easy to get water on them or—or not, you know, to what you—what you heard. In this case, what you would do, you would—in the case of an event, potentially put water on the surroundings, make sure that the surroundings are cooled and will not undergo thermal runaway, and the batteries that would be involved in an event, you would just allow them to burn out in a controlled way.
Okay. And finally, in case there is a fire, there's the potential of stranded energy, okay, and that the stranded energy that remains after the fire is at risk of reigniting and starting another fire. What precautions are there to reduce that from happening?
Yep, that's a good point that has happened. In a situation like this, you know, like we talk about the let it burn strategy to like—to like your earlier question, that's sort of connected now, right? Like, it's like if—it's hard to put water on it, sometimes it's just like—it's—sometimes it's just better to like—the batteries that are compromised, to just allow them to burn out and to fully consume themselves, you know, then—then you don't deal with that stranded energy.
Okay. And you—you mentioned that you've learned from this, and that actually brings another question to my mind. I know that in the last four years, the United States has had been 16 fires at energy—battery storages. So do we know what the circumstances were that resulted in those fires, and have we learned from those instances?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like there is—the industry is definitely applying lessons learned. And the last four years, I think, like, a lot has actually happened. So I mentioned NFPA 855, you know, this—this came out four years ago, has now meanwhile been revised last year to apply those type of lessons learned. One significant lesson learned was like to—to require, for example, explosion protection, you know, which was not a requirement at first. And—and, you know, the industry gets—gets better in understanding from past events what happens there, and like to—to—to use that, you know, knowledge to—to prevent it going forward, you know? Like, they're like different—it would be a long conversation to list them all, but like, for example, like to just like provide better environmental protection to the batteries and so on. Older systems, let's say, like, four—four years and before that, they tend to be fairly open, well-ventilated or so. Nowadays, like, we want to—we want to have tighter environmental control, make sure like that condensation is not a problem, and so on. Yeah, this—this—these root cause analyses, you know, are being—like the lessons learned from them are being actively applied today.
I know you don't want to spend a great deal of time on that. I'll give you my email address.
All right.
So that's actually my final question for you. I have one last question, staff. I'd ask if the fire marshal could at least come up and give a summary of your analysis and conclusions. Thank you very much.
Hello. So you're just looking for a summary of my analysis of the submittal? Excuse me. So there was a analysis provided, it was a technical report with some potential products that will be used, and each of those were listing the fire protection provided, as well as any gas detection, heat detection. All of those were meeting the fire codes listed and the NFPA requirements, as well as UL requirements. So we felt it was sufficiently showing compliance with all currently adopted state and national codes.
Okay, so all eyes were dotted and all paws were crossed. Thumbs up to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Judy?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Barry?
Just one clarification. You had mentioned the question regarding the zone change designation. Could you summarize briefly? And there was discussion about the—the power issue requiring that. Any other—any other requirements that would cause that to move up to the new zoning designation?
Yes, so the existing—as stated during the presentation, the existing zoning district is Plan Development Industrial. Plan developments are very specific to a site. It's my understanding and my review of the initial entitlements was that the Plan Development Industrial was adopted to facilitate the natural gas facility and the Isoplex. Given that the Isoplex is no longer in service and that the applicant is looking to—to—to redevelop the site, staff felt it appropriate to rezone the property to a zoning designation which would be consistent with our existing zoning districts. The Plan Development Industrial is—based off of the zoning ordinance, is not an existing zoning designation. And so due to the fact that the Plan Development was very specific to the Isoplex and the natural gas facility, it made sense to revert to a zoning district that exists, which is the M2, which is the—one of the heavier industrial zoning districts that we have in the city.
Okay, thank you. So with respect to—to whom is the power being sold? I think you had mentioned the California—more of the umbrella group, right, for clean energy sources. I—I just want to point out that you've got a significant contradiction there, because in your—well, I guess—it doesn't—on your website, you list a whole suite of— and I assume these are just illustrative—the—the Clean Power San Francisco Redwood Coast Energy Authority, San Jose Clean Energy, et cetera, and they're all Northern California, it seems. So I was just curious, because in your—in the—in the document, it talks about how it's going to be so helpful to Escondido residents and would serve—I think staff came up with a number of-X number of homes or something, which is great, but it just seems like you're—you're selling it elsewhere. So just curious about that.
So all those entities are part of California Community Power?
Right.
So they're the entities, part of California Community Power, that are subscribing to that contract. The fact that the project is physically located in the city of Escondido is what's going to help the local grid resiliency and prevention of blackouts and so on, that's described in the website.
Right, so am I to understand, then, that it would actually be consumed here first before it goes elsewhere?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Is that an assumption, or is that a—
No, no, that's reality. So physically, the—the—the power stays in Escondido.
Right.
What the CCAs or are part of the contract are benefiting from is a financial settlement kind of a situation.
Right. Okay. Okay. And then, what was my—oh, I always have a question about outreach. My understanding is you had—you held one outreach or community outreach event?
We had—we had three—
You had three?
—open houses, yeah.
Three, and my understanding is nobody showed up?
We didn't have anyone show up.
So that there's clearly not as much interest from the community. Okay, that was all I had. Thank you.
Stan?
Yeah, and—and thank you, my fellow commissioners, for asking all the really good questions, especially Commissioner Barber. You really did your homework.
My questions are kind of related, actually, to some of the more design aspects. A couple of things. Are we—are—is there no additional landscaping that's going to go along the flood control area? And—and the reason I'm asking is because this is what I notice when I go around town. Anytime there's a blank slate of wall, fence, or whatever, graffiti's going up, and it's going up pretty quickly. So I see how the applicant's treating the front, which is great, with the landscaping, it's a deterrent. I'm kind of wondering on the flood control side, and really, because you can kind of see it from the freeway, but also that's a bicycle trail that goes through there, and the city has actually been doing a really good job on getting rid of the—the graffiti that's on the ground on the bike path. But what I don't want is an attractive nuisance on that backside.
Yeah, yeah, so right here, we are seeing the east elevation, which shows it from the flood control channel.
the flood control channel. They're not proposing additional landscaping, as there is existing landscaping there. Now to the concern of, you know, graffiti and vandalism, the applicant, as a part of the conditions of approval, is required to put anti-coating, anti-graffiti coating onto the walls themselves, and that would apply through, throughout the whole linear frontage of the wall. Additionally, the, a standard condition of approval that the city has is that the applicant has up to, I believe, 48 hours to remove graffiti on the walls. And so these are existing standards that we have, and property maintenance that the applicant's required to do. However, they're not proposing landscaping in this section, because there's already existing landscaping there.
And staff is satisfied that the coating actually really works?
We will work with the applicant in the post-entitlement process to identify a specific type of material. We did run this by PD. PD didn't have any specific concerns with this section of the wall. Their main concern was tulip street.
Perfect. All right, thank you. The other question I have is in relationship to the change to the code, as it relates to wall height. And is it, and I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that in order to go beyond eight feet, that the wall needs to be, needs to meet the setbacks?
That is correct, yes. In the commercial and industrial zone, if the wall is outside of required setbacks, whether it's 10 feet or 20 feet, in the industrial zone, it's 10 feet for the front yard, they are allowed to go up to eight feet by right.
Right, right. But if they meet the setback, then through this administrative approval, they can go up to 10 feet or 12 feet?
That is correct.
So if you're meeting the setback, why would there be a height restriction on a wall?
So currently, that is just how the, the code is written. And so, if, currently, the code says that if you are outside the setback, you can go up to eight feet. There are no allowances for increases in height. Through the administrative adjustment process, if you are outside the setback, then you can increase that eight feet to either 10 feet or 12 feet. That, that is, that process doesn't exist currently. It's always been eight feet in the time that I've been here. And so that's just how the code is written.
And that's okay. I, I guess it kind of goes to sort of, sort of the sense that if a building is meeting their, their setback, it's 35 feet or whatever the building height restriction is, so why the restriction on a wall? Is, and if the answer is, well, that's kind of the way our code's written, and that's the way you wanna propose this, I don't have a problem with it by any means. I was just wondering what the thought process was, if you're already meeting the setback. But if that's the way staff is proposing it, I'm fine with that. And that's all my questions. Thank you.
All right, and I just have a couple. So in the, the choice of batteries, it says, is still up in the air, that there's some that were looked at and some that are in the report, and you may or may not choose batteries that are in this, in this report. In environmental review, it says that batteries, containers can be up to 20 feet high, and so the environmental review was done for 20-foot-high batteries?
That, so the initial phase of the project, they had considered doing double stacked. Their quality analysis, the noise analysis, was conservative and did this double stacking of what it would look like. However, this, this project, this iteration of the project would be less intense than the double stacking. The project has been conditioned to, to maintain the single stack. If they were to go to double stack, based on the, based on the manufacturer that they choose, there are conditions that would require them to set back those double stacks further, subject to the director's approval. However, the initial study, as they were going through the process, did a worst-case scenario. That is not the case, though.
Okay, thank you. And then, I, I have a question, I don't know if you're gonna be able to answer this, is we, we added batteries, I believe, over by the new hospital, that, that site, and the county's gonna, they're gonna put some on the county over there. Do we know how much batteries Escondido needs?
We've done, we've not done an analysis of exactly how much battery energy storages would be necess, would be needed in the city. As of, in my, in the time that I've been here, we received this one and another request, however, we've not done the full analysis of what it, what would be the maximum allowable, I guess, battery storage. And I think it's important to note that this is existing, this is cited next to an existing substation. And so if there's not an existing substation on another property, it's less like, it's not likely that they'll, they'll be proposing battery energy storages. And so it really has to, just the unique nature of this type of use, it has to be, have very specific existing site design, existing site infrastructure, such as existing substations.
Right, right. And then I have a question about when, when we have a fire on this site, and I did sit in with this staff meeting to, to talk about that. And, and I just wanted to get some clarification about evacuation. So when, when we have a, a fire in one of those containers, how large an area will be restricted? I'm thinking that this borders the 15. Are we going to close the 15? Are we gonna close East Valley Parkway?
So as, yeah, stated in the staff report, I may have to defer.
If fire could answer that.
To fire for that.
It would really depend on the incident and the size of the fire to where the evacuation. There's a lot of factors that, that come into play with that. Part of the technical analysis and then part of the hazardous materials plan that's going to be submitted through the county and through Escondido Fire and Building will include evacuation and the evacuation plan that we will have operational with Escondido Fire. But there's potential that the evacuation area could include the freeway area. It just really kind of depends on what the incident is and how large it gets.
Okay, thank you. And then, I, I don't know if this is a question or not, it's kind of a question. There's, this appendix section starts with appendix A, UL 9540A test, and then, and then it goes on to have the appendixes with the different types of batteries. But the description of this test says, in part, "The following list provides a summary of the criteria that must be met at each level of testing." And then the first is the cell, cell-level test. And that's, the cell-level test includes thermal runaway, cannot be induced in the cell, that's something David mentioned, thermal runaway. And the cell vent gas does not present a flammability hazard. And in the analysis, some of these batteries say that we, we're not gonna tell you the results of the test, and some of them do tell you the results of the test. And in, in several cases, including the first battery, this Flex Gen, under large, large-scale testing, says the UL 9540 test was performed, and during the cell-level test, the initiating cell underwent thermal runaway, and the vent gas from the cell produced a flammable mixture. So that's a contradiction to this statement that says, "The following list provides a summary of the criteria that must be, must be met at each level of the testing." So is anybody that can explain this contradiction?
So the UL 9540A test standard, you know, that tells us how batteries need to be tested. This, the batteries undergo typically a four-level test approach, like cell, module, unit, and installation level. And what you read there were like the performance criteria for each level test. And if you do not meet the performance criteria for a certain level, then you must go to the next level. Meaning like, if like the vent gas from thermal runaway is flammable, now you must perform the module-level test.
Right.
And so with lithium-ion batteries, when they undergo thermal runaway, they will always produce flammable gases. So it's, it's, it's kind of interesting that the test standard is written that way, because pretty much everybody has to go through at least the first three levels of testing. Because like, for the module-level test, that next set of performance criteria.
Right, they all fail.
You know, like, also, I think, says like, hey, you know, like, can't be flammable vent gas, you know, but that's, that's just always the case, you know? I think they maybe put that in the test standard for like, in case somebody comes out with a magical battery chemistry, where that it's not the case, but like, we don't have that in the mainstream yet.
Okay. But the, the summary of the test says, "The following list provides a summary of the criteria that must be met at each level of testing." So that statement is not, is not accurate, right?
Yeah, I think, I think you're correct, yeah. So basically, if it's not met, then you go to the next level.
Right.
Yeah, that, that should be clarified.
Okay, thank you very much. Good?
I do have a question.
Okay.
And forgive me, I should actually be sitting over there, 'cause it takes me a little longer. I'm the newbie here, so. I do have two questions. There, the way it's worded here, there's a couple of things that don't give certainty as far as, you know, we're certainly gonna move forward with, with this product. And it states on page 14, let's see what it states here. "At this time, the applicant has not selected the ultimate make, model, and manufacturer of the batteries." So with that, we're not even certain which battery we're gonna go with to be able to research. And, so that's one thing that just, so I just wanna confirm, we don't know which battery?
No, so the, the, at this point, a battery, like, as you stated, the model and manufacture and make hasn't been decided. As the applicant gets closer to the construction stage, they'll have a better idea as to what model they'll select. However, based on the review of what they provided and the conditions in the project, they will be required to meet California code, fire code, and the National Fire Protection Association code. So this is, this is, I would say, the, the fact that this is changing technology, it's always improving, and we didn't wanna really prevent the applicant from potentially selecting a better technology when they get closer to construction and grading. Regardless of what model they end up choosing, they will have to go through the fire, like Levana said, our fire marshal, they also have to meet fire code requirements.
Okay. And then another thing that seemed very uncertain is it also states in there, the, "It appears to be non-combustible." So appears to be is also, I think, oops, my gosh, my page just left me, but just that language, it's like, I think, for something of this magnitude, it's very, you know, especially with the batteries that can burn for days. And, and I only have experience with electric vehicles, and I know that the experience with the Teslas is when there's a fire, there's been an incident where they had to bury the Tesla, I don't know if anybody heard about this, for two days to put the fire out, and they brought the Tesla back out and it was still on fire. So, it's just one of those things to where it appears to be non-combustible. So the appears to be, I mean, it either is or it isn't. And what safeguards do we have to ensure that it's not just, you know, crossing our fingers and hoping for the best?
Do you, is that a part of the staff report, or is that in the attachment?
Let's see. Uh, forgive me, I lost the page on that.
I think it's the staff report, you said page 14. I think you said.
Uh, page 14 was, the battery, yeah. So it was, hmm.
Actually, halfway through there, it does say, "Has not selected the ultimate."
Testing, there we go. Appears to be part of the Jensen Hughes report.
Okay.
Which is page 27 of the packet.
Let me try to see exactly where it is here. Okay. Yes, so 27, second paragraph, second sentence after CFC Appendix B. "The building appears to be non-combustible, combustible construction and was therefore assumed." So appears to be and assumed is just not something I'm comfortable with. I, I just wonder, is there more certainty in that, in terms of a safety factor?
Want to defer to the applicant for that?
Thank you.
We're pulling up a report. My name's Kristen Nanty, see, I'm with Jensen Hughes. I authored the report. So yeah, so the reference to appears to be non-combustible construction is referring to that existing building that is on-site. Part of that is due to the fact that that building is planned on being partially demolished. So, but what this is looking at in reference to is water supply requirements. And so the water supply requirements that are being referred to in this section are actually specific to just that building and don't necessarily have to do with the batteries. So some background on how water supply for firefighting is determined is based on what the building is constructed of. So as far as like the concerns of a battery fire with respect to that building, just like in the requirements that's stated in this section, doesn't necessarily have to do with that. But assuming the concern is with the hazard presented from a battery fire to the building, there are requirements for distances of separation. It's 10 feet minimum, and that's being provided from the batteries. And then also the testing that is performed by UL 9540A testing, basically looks at, you know, flaming outside of the unit, and so that's one of those criteria that you were looking at in that testing standard. And so, the concern of that is, in my opinion, relatively low. But yes, so the assumption was based on just us trying to provide to the fire department proof that there's enough water to fight a fire in that building. And so that's why that assumption was made, 'cause that's not necessarily related to our battery, our involvement with the batteries. Sorry, if you have additional questions, I can clarify further.
No, I'm just looking at it from a different point of view, in that public safety.
Understood.
So I, I'm hearing you say the concern of that is relatively low. So it's just, I think with something like that, I just want to feel more confident about the safety of it. And as far as even if it's relatively low in this area and the batteries are gonna be somewhere else, are there gonna be some improvements made to ensure that that may not be an issue? Or, I guess I'm looking for a guarantee.
A guarantee that, like, a fire in the batteries is not gonna then spread to the building?
At least everything, you know.
Right.
Safeguard as much as possible versus?
Or is her point, or is your point that you want a guarantee that there's enough water supply to put out a fire on that building?
Yes, as far as what safeguards, is it gonna be?
Right, and so, I mean, just to speak to that, like.
Thank you.
The, the site has plenty of fire protection water, even if that building was not a type 2B, it would still meet the requirements for fire flow. Although, the non-combustible construction, I think, was a fairly safe assumption. I don't believe that that is a combustible construction, but I do believe that they're like significantly, 'cause basically you can count like a certain amount of water being provided by each hydrant.
Mm-hmm.
And so, there's ability to add additional fire hydrants. But yeah, as far as like the ability to provide enough water to fight a fire in that building of that size, should be able to be provided by the.
I just wanted clarification on that.
No worries, I understand why that would be concerning language.
Thank you. Did you want something?
Sure.
I'm Brendan Miller, I'm with Westwood Professional Services. We were responsible for the layout of this project, and so, one of the considerations in this includes, per the fire code, the separation between different types of structures. And in this case, the building will be, we're assuming a non-combustible-type structure, meaning that the materials that it's made out of would trigger certain requirements for sprinkling, how much water is required per square foot within that building. Now, when the project goes to the full building permit phase, what'll happen is there's gonna be modifications to the building, which will include determining the type of the existing structure that's to remain, as well as the new structure that will be built as part of that. as part of that, along with these separation requirements. And so there is certainly some uncertainty at this time as to the exact nature of the construction. However, the setbacks are set by the fire code, so there will be sufficient setback for the batteries. But the building itself, of course, has risk that it could have a fire of its own unrelated to the batteries. And so that's what would be triggering this requirement as far as the amount of fire water that's needed inside the building that can't be known at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, boys and girls, what do you want to do?
Unless anyone has any desire for further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, so then I'd like further discussion before we do a motion. If I'm not really gung ho about this project. And if I was gung ho about this project, I still wouldn't want to change the zoning to M two. I think when we did this as a planned development, the community, we got a we got a power plant and the community benefit was, and we got an ice skating rink, and we did that through the planned development, and we did that because of the location. And if we just rezone this M two, that goes away, but in the but in the future, any control over what gets built on that spot will go away as well. And I just think it's 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 too desirable of a spot there right next to the vibrant, viable commercial.
I have a question then. Based on your point, my question is to staff. You mentioned that the change of designation was necessary in order to make this project fly. Is that something, is there still a way to not change the designation and make this project work?
So like, so like as I stated, the planned development industrial was very specific to the development of the isoplex and the natural gas facility. It would be possible for the applicant to amend the planned development district through the through the through that process. However, we would essentially be accomplishing the same thing, but through a through a different process. And so it due to the the building being vacant, the property owner also owning the natural gas facility, and essentially the site itself, it made sense for them to redevelop the site to complement their existing natural gas facility. And so I guess short answer is yes. It would be intel different process, but given the fact that the building's been vacant for the last two years, it felt more of like a cleanup. And I think one thing I I do want to note is that the planned development industrial zoning district is not a zoning district outlined in our zoning ordinance. And so, for example, we have planned development residential and planned development commercial. The planned development industrial, which was adopted in ninety-four, is no longer exist. And so it would be a cleanup essentially of a zoning district that is no longer within our zoning ordinance.
So I really don't have a problem with changing the zoning designation. It looks like it's not even in part of our code anymore.
That is correct, and it's not identified in the general plan.
Regardless, even if it was, I still don't have a problem with it. And I'll tell you why, because if it happened to be that if this body chose to approve this, goes on to city council, gets approved, it's developed, and then becomes no longer viable, the next guy that comes in, he's got the opportunity to change the zone back to some sort of, well, you couldn't because we don't have that zone unless we change the zone, but we could change the code anyway to put it back in. It's it's a possibility, the futures, we can, you know, make these changes as we go along as the city sees fit at that time. So that's not, to me, it's not a concern regarding the zoning designation. But I see what seems to be that this sort of technology and the the move towards electric, this need is going to become more and more prevalent, I would assume, these storage needs. And if we're going to have storage needs, much better that it's right here in the industrial area and quite frankly, the heavy industrial area of the city as opposed to somewhere else where it may be closer to residential type uses. In listening to the applicant and and the way they answered their questions, they appear to me very knowledgeable about how to make sure that they are going to meet not only national fire code, but California code in addition to our own fire department, their review of this, their confidence that they're gonna, everybody's going to be on the same page to make sure that all the safety measures are going to be in place. These storage, these battery storage containers, they they're double walled and the fire suppression facilities are located in each one of these, so it's not like it's in a big warehouse. And if one spot goes up, the whole thing goes up. So it seems to me that it's very, very contained. So if there's going to be any sort of failure, it appears that these failures are taken care of on a very small scale very quickly with whether it's off-site monitoring or even the onsite folks that are right there. So I'm I'm very, I'm very much in favor of this at this location. I think it's the right location, right next to the the power facility that's already there. It seems very natural. All the utilities, all the facilities are already in place to be able to handle what this battery storage facility is proposed proposing. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, yeah, see, I disagree about the location, Stan, that I because all of the all of the ones that have already caught on fire were all UL approved and approved by everybody, and they they still caught on fire. So so yes, they they belong in an M two site and but we're going to change this to M two so that it will belong here because this isn't this, I don't know that this should be an M two site. But okay, anybody else?
Well, I'll just mention then that I agree with Commissioner Wyler that I'd like to see Eskenewell more involved in helping provide renewable energy. I would just, my biggest concern was whether or not we're doing our utmost to try to, if not control risk of fire, at least greatly reduce the risk to our utmost abilities. Our fire marshal has given it a thumbs up, so I will give it a thumbs up. And I I think the location should be in an industrial zone, and I think this is a safe distance away from residential, so I will support the project.
I'm comfortable with the project as well. I just think I'm always looking at, you know, just the public safety in case of emergency aspect of it. And so, yeah, I know, I think it's a great location, I think it's a good opportunity. And I do have a question with that, just may not, it has nothing to do with this, but how many jobs would that generate? Do you, is there any idea?
So it's going to be a couple of two or four.
Okay. All right, that was, yeah. But again, I just kind of wanted a little bit more specific and more clarification to where it's not just assuming it's one thing or another because we can all assume something different, have a different conclusion.
So two aspects of this that come to my thoughts, and one of them, the first is the safety concerns expressed by many. As I hear the deliberation, the explanations on that, you know, it's difficult for a planning commission to be fully apprised of all the issues relating to fire safety, but we do have our local fire marshal. We also have, it was well stated that the code has been reactive in 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 short measure to changes that accommodate the lessons learned. I thought that was a very good answer and gave me a high level of confidence that that's what we rely on. We rely on our codes. We also rely on quick changing of codes to respond to new technologies, and I think that's what we're hearing here. So from a safety standpoint, I'm I'm satisfied that we're doing what we should, we've looked at this carefully, and we have the right experts on it. From the other aspect, I don't have, didn't have any immediate concerns regarding the zoning, but I do want to explore that just a little bit further, and that is with this M two designation. Is there anything that any of the commissioners can think of that would be a concern? For example, should this project go away, that designation remain the M two, and then we would be concerned about what might move into that neighborhood next? Is there anything that comes to mind that would cause concern?
Well, yeah, that's that's my point, is that that's bordering a viable commercial area, and we should be trying to increase the the requirements to that property, not lower them. M two is our most industrial use. I mean, you can put the salvage yard there or whatever. And I and I and I think, right, I think that's not, we're on the track to to bring that area down instead of lift it up.
So staff would like to just clarify that for this project site, while the zoning is planned development industrial, which as Ivan stated is no longer a zoning designation identified in our general plan or in our zoning ordinance, the general plan land use designation is general industrial, and that is identified within our general plan, of course, and exists currently. And the two zoning designations that are consistent with the general industrial are M two and M one, which are both industrial zoning designations. So should the project tonight not transpire and the amendment to the zoning designation not occur, any future development at this site would have to undergo a zoning change to align to one of those two designations.
That's helpful, thank you. No more questions from me. Unless there's more requests for deliberation, I'm prepared to make motion. I am making motion, let me pull this up so I can speak correctly, to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash nineteen.
Second.
Voting has been opened. If you'd like to refresh your screens. Commissioner Barber, yours did not load, if you could please. It might have been for the last vote, I apologize.
Well, I just announced my vote.
So the voting is five to one to approve with one vote nay from Chair Rick Paul.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Good luck with your project. All right, current business. Future agenda items? Anyone? No. Oral communications? None. All right. Planning commissioners' reports? All right. City planners' report?
Good evening, Commission. Generally speaking, I would like to just briefly touch on that you were invited to briefings for this item tonight, and as mentioned, to those who attended briefings, the city planner and the planning division are working toward creating a more frequent occurrence of briefings on projects that are either larger in scope, controversial, or a use type that the commission may have not seen recently or at all, such as the Gold Line facility this evening. So please do anticipate more invites to briefings as projects come forward.
Thank you.
Via the chair, could I could I ask a question of Veronica? So we were supposed to hear a presentation or something on the new Costco. What's the what's the future of that as far as coming to us for some sort of update?
Just to clarify, I believe Commissioner Wyler is not talking about the Costco application, but but a previous agenda item, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, just to be clear, because I.
Yeah, that was that was what I was inquiring on.
Right, there was an agenda item that Adam had talked about, which was kind of a briefing on the North County Mall history of the of the site itself, not necessarily the Costco.
Thank you for that clarification. I do recall seeing that on some of Adam's documents, so if that is something that is of of interest, staff can work to get that as a current business item for presentation to commission.
And I'm not making that request. It was more of, was it going to be coming back to us because it was on a previous agenda? But if that's not the case, I'm not ready to make that request quite yet, but if one of the other commissioners wanted that, I I've got to just think about it more before I make that quick call.
So for background, we wanted to discuss the North County Mall, but there was this pending application for Costco out there. So Adam said maybe we can do a presentation before Costco, thinking that Costco is going to be six months, twelve months away. But now if Costco is going to be a month away, then don't bother. If Costco is still going to be six months or a year away, then sure, let's have a presentation on the mall. Does that does that help, Veronica?
That is very helpful. Thank you. And then my last item is just that we are reaching the end of twenty-twenty-three. There are currently four regularly scheduled planning commission meetings for the remainder of the year, one of which falls the day after what is typically observed as Christmas. So I will be looking to you all, I will send out email correspondence to identify whether anyone will be absent from that meeting to see if we'll have quorum. So just look for that forthcoming.
Question, you you're you're going to poll us to see if we will be in attendance, not to see whether we should hold that meeting, is that correct?
So since the meeting is regularly already scheduled and on the public calendar as a planning commission date, it would be to poll whether we will have a quorum. I recognize that is a very frequently traveled and typically folks take that time off. So we do meet regularly on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, so it just happens to fall on that date. And if we can't achieve quorum, then the meeting would theoretically be canceled.
I can already tell you I will be in Oregon with my family.
I will be out of town as well.
Yeah, Maine.
Looking pretty obvious.
I think you're you need to cancel that one. So I'm just curious, is there a meeting on the seventh, to your knowledge, at this point of November? Is it the seventh?
The the next regularly scheduled planning commission after today is November fourteenth.
Oh, fourteenth, sorry. Okay.
And then November twenty-eighth.
Right, no, but then the fourteenth is actually going to happen.
Correct, both.
Sometimes Adam would give us a heads up saying this one's canceled or whatever.
So at this time, we anticipate both November fourteenth and November twenty-eighth being held. There are items that are anticipated going that those evenings. And we also anticipate that with the December, don't quote me on the date, I want to say it's December sixth, planning commission meeting?
Twelve.
Or December twelfth.
December twelfth. That that meeting we anticipate being held as well because it would, with the cancellation of twelve twenty-six, be the last calendar meeting of twenty-three.
And then on the the briefings, if I recall correctly, it was like a day or two before the Wednesday briefing that that I received a notice, and and I wanted to attend, but I already had business things to be up in L.A. for. And I know things are beyond your control sometimes regarding when those things happen, but they're important and I want to go, but I just need a little bit more advance, if at all possible, so I can prioritize that.
Yes, we will do our best to coordinate early, usually two weeks minimum, and we have to coordinate schedules with lots of folks. So as soon as we know them, we try to send them out to get everyone's input.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.